Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. Welcome to the Lundary Town Council meeting on January 22nd, 2024 at 7:00 PM. Before we rise for the Pledge of Allegiance, a reminder that the presidential primary is tomorrow morning. The polls open at 6:00 AM and close at 8:00 PM. With that, let's stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic, which stands: One nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Ladies and gentlemen, let's stand for a moment and let's hope for a safe... It's gonna be a long day, and I hope it's a safe day for all the candidates and all the people working the polls here in the state of New Hampshire. Okay, ladies and gentlemen, we'll entertain public comment. Is there anyone for a public comment this evening? Name and address for the records, please.
Yes, Tom Dolan, 19 Isabella Drive. And, good evening, gentlemen. Long time no see. And let me, before I get started, let me say thank you very much for the service you give to the community. It's well appreciated and it's a lot of hard work. I know personally, it's a lot of hard work. And tomorrow, you're gonna have a long day with all the projected write-ins. It's gonna be a long day. Hopefully, you get home before midnight, hopefully. But thank you, Mr. Chairman. Tonight, I wanted to... I've been thinking about the meetings over the past several months, and it can get a little rough. And I was thinking about how... To offer a suggestion for you to think about and consider about how you might want to manage public comment a little bit differently, differently than when I was sitting where you are, and differently going forward. So this would be a modification to your rules. And let me first say that it's hard sometimes to recognize, and for the public to recognize, that this is your meeting, and you've invited the public to observe your meeting. And in some cases, at your meeting, you might even invite them to speak, which is what we typically call a public comment. So let's never forget whose meeting this is, and that you're in the business of conducting the town's business here in public. Let me say that we have a councillor here who's also a state rep, who can attest to what I'm about to say, and that is that the rules for public comment at the State House are a little different than what they are here. And I might suggest that you might want to consider adopting a set of rules like that for your use here, and that is that the comments for public comment could very well be altered to be contextual at their base. For example, if there's a hearing to be held at the State House at one of the committees, the chair of the committee will insist that the comments from the public have to do with the item under consideration, and that other comments are out of order. So for tonight, for example, on your agenda, you've got a zoning ordinance to talk about, some acquisition of some cable equipment, and a discussion about the Arts Council. So in context, what I would suggest you consider for a rules change, because you do set the rules for your own committee here, is that you would limit public comment, or... That might be the wrong word. You would encourage public comment on the items that are on your agenda. In other words, the things that the public comment would be in context with those things. If someone wants to have a public comment and say, "I want to talk about the parking lot out behind the police station and the fact that there's trash in the parking lot, I'm not happy about it." Well, that might be something that you might want to hear, but it might be better offline, and it's not in context with what your agenda is. You don't have an agenda, unless you have an agenda item about trash in the... With apologies to the police chief, I'm not suggesting there's anything wrong with the police parking lot, but just as an example, and like I said, councillor Nun, being a state rep, can also help advise how that works at the State House, if you're curious about what limits the council, rather, the chair of a particular State House committee puts on the members of the committee to make sure that the rules are followed. And why would you do this? What does it do? It might set better expectations for the public, that they know during public comment that the comment will be contextual and limited to the items on your agenda, and it might create an additional efficiency for the council's dialogue of the issues before you. So that's what I wanted to suggest for you to think about. I don't... Knowing how you guys operate, probably not something for you to shut off the mics and start deliberating about. It's something kind of like a coffee, making a cup of coffee, let it steep a little bit, and think about maybe ways to alter the way that you hear and consider public comment. Available for any questions that you might have? Otherwise, that's it.
Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Again, wish you luck tomorrow. Have a safe day.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Anne Champa, 28 Wedgwood Drive. Well, Representative Dolan just gave me another thing on my agenda to talk about. Thank you. I appreciate it, your honesty. But I think this is a forum where town residents can voice their opinions, they can ask questions, not get them answered right away, I'm sure. But also, you encourage us to come to meetings and be involved in the process, not shut us down to just limit us. That's not right. We've always done it like that. You just have to control some situations better. That's how I feel. Let's see, what did I come to speak about? Oh, you may not like this one. It was approximately a year ago that there was a reorganization in the planning department. And since then, we've lost some people...
We're not gonna discuss personnel issues.
I know. I'm not saying any names.
Same, so you're aware.
I just may mention one. Some have come and gone, and I just noticed that one of the persons who was hired is no longer on the list for employees in the planning department. I was... As a member of the planning board, I'm curious about what's going on. I thought we should have... Might have gotten notified about that, and is there something in the process to hire a new town planner? Or... Because Kelly's been filling in for so long, and it didn't seem like Benjamin, you know, really fully got to exercise his planning duties while he was here. So I have no idea what's going on. If... You don't have to answer, Mr. Town Manager, if you're the one that's gonna be answering this today, but I've just... I think we deserve some explanation in what's gonna go forward.
We're not gonna address personnel issues.
Okay, I know. I don't want you to. It's just... And also, on... There's a person's name who's writing the meeting minutes, and I don't know who they are, and I just wonder, are they in the room? Are they Beth Hengely?
He's taking the minutes right now.
You're not Beth. Okay. Okay. I'm looking through minutes, and I'm seeing that name that I don't recognize. And usually, if it's somebody who's within the town, I bring them some fruit spread from Merrill's Farm to welcome them to the town. So anyways, I just want to know what's going on.
I think he wants his fruit spread.
Wait a second, you got yours.
I wouldn't mind another one.
And you got yours. Maybe you didn't get one, did you? Oh.
I sure am.
Thank you very much. I'm just wondering what's going on. I know it's not on a subject of any of the meeting items, but I just... It was something I want to bring to the table and figure it out. Thanks.
You're welcome. Anyone else for public comment? Mr. Chair. You want the chief to go, or do you want... Chief, would you...
I would like to make a public comment.
Oh, boy, get up there.
Mom, are you joining him?
I like that.
No.
You're not? Okay. Then I have to ask him for his name and address if you're not gonna join him, Mom. Otherwise, I'll ask you.
Yes, I'll...
You'll address that?
Yes.
Okay, young man. Your name and address, please.
I am Andrew Flockton of 21 B. Mercury Drive.
Thank you. Please proceed.
I am requesting that the Town Council consider a matter not on the posted agenda: A resolution in support of a new state flag. I have redesigned the state flag of New Hampshire. I am a vexillologist, that is, one who studies flags. The current state flag of New Hampshire basically consists of a state seal on a blue background, commonly called a seal on a bed sheet. I would now like to state the reasons why I think the state flag should be changed. Firstly, the Old Man of the Mountain is a distinct symbol to both New Hampshireites and people nationwide. The Old Man of the Mountain is synonymous with New Hampshire, is on the state emblem, license plates, state root signs, and the New Hampshire State Corridor. The motto "Live Free or Die" is a synonymous symbol featured on our state emblem and license plates. This flag would give the Old Man representation on flagpoles across the state. This flag also includes "Live Free or Die," our state motto famously written by General John Stark in 1809. There are also nine stars representing New Hampshire being the ninth state admitted to the Union. Secondly, two states have recently changed their flags: Utah and Minnesota. Similar to them, our flag is a seal on a bed sheet, and the design that I am proposing would be a unique symbol of New Hampshire. The New Hampshire flag is one of 33 that use their state seal or coat of arms on their flags, and one of the 25 flags with a blue background. In the 2001 State and Provincial Flags Survey by the North American Vexillological Association, New Hampshire ranked 63rd, or in other words, the 10th worst flag in the survey. That is why I argue that if New Hampshire's flag is changed, it may be a better and more effective flag to represent New Hampshire. You may wonder how many people visit the beautiful White Mountains, in which the Old Man was nestled. Well, according to the Forest Service, the White Mountains receives upwards of 6 million visitors annually. A large majority of these visitors understand the symbolism that the Old Man represents for New Hampshire. And as far as "Live Free or Die," General Stark wrote this as a toast to the Battle of Bennington, a battle which helped America on its quest for independence. The full quote is actually "Live Free or Die: Death is not the worst of evils." New Hampshire is a state that fought to secure the freedoms we all enjoy today. Putting "Live Free or Die" on the flag serves as a commemoration to our state's history and the freedoms we all enjoy today. As you may see, my shirt has a variance of the design. This will give you an idea of the flag that I propose.
Get that, Drew?
I'm not...
Flash the light for me if you got it.
Oh.
They're gonna make sure they got it on TV for you. Okay. There you go.
Yep. Everyone, what do you think of when you think of New Hampshire? What I think about is the Old Man and "Live Free or Die," both great symbols of the Great Granite State. I thank this meeting's attendees for their time.
So how about if I do you one better than a resolution from the council?
Oh, what is that?
How about if this council asked one of the state rep who sits on the council to sponsor a bill to put in front of the legislature with your proposal? Would that be okay with you? Because they have to change it, we can't.
Right. Well, I was suggesting the resolution because actually Rep. Tim McGee, he introduced a bill to add "Live Free or Die" to the flag. And the reason I'm doing this is that he said that if this is where, quote, "the wind blows" with his other lawmakers, then he would even consider a fall redesign, according to an NHPR interview. And I'm thinking that a resolution would be where the wind blows, because then it would be two conflicting bills, and that may not be a good thing.
I could help you out a little bit. I know Tim McGee. He's on my committee.
Oh.
And I could offer an amendment to his bill for you, so we could put that together for you.
I think that would be great.
All right. We could absolutely do that. I'll see Tim on Wednesday.
I only have one condition.
What is that condition?
That you go testify in front of the State House and make your argument to them. How do you feel about that?
You can do it.
Oh, I plan to do that.
All right. And when you turn 18, you run for this council. Take over.
Maybe I will, maybe I won't. Who knows?
I'm gonna give you my card.
Good work.
Have a good evening.
Sure. Yeah, that's fine.
Why don't you get a picture, guys? This is a moment.
Sure.
Picture.
Come on. Come on up here. Come on up here. Absolutely. Get right in there. Come here.
All right? Get in here.
Oh, my gosh. Oh, a moment in time. That was wonderful. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you for coming tonight.
Thank you very much.
Have a great day.
Nicely done. Nicely done.
Yes.
That was...
Sure you still want to go, chief?
You got it.
Hey, man, nice job. Outstanding.
Thank you.
Good job.
It's a pretty tough act to follow.
Well, that sure is. That sure is. Good evening, leadership, coming at you for a command update for the Fire Department. As you know, the paramedic job market is almost non-existent, and a while ago, the Fire Department looked within its ranks to see how we solve that problem to ensure that we provide the taxpayers with the highest level of prehospital care available in the state at the paramedic level. On this past Friday, we had two Lundary firefighters graduate from an accelerated nine-month paramedic program down in Pro EMS in Cambridge, Massachusetts, bringing our total paramedic certification at the Fire Department up to 24. So that is a huge feat, and it just goes to kind of speak to the caliber of employees we have in our community at our Fire Department. The next update...
Excuse me, chief?
Yes, sir.
Can you name the two that were...
Absolutely. Christopher Schofield, he is the union president of Local 3160, and Liam Jerome, who is one of our newer hires. So Christopher balanced it with two young kids at home while working shift work, and as did Liam, so we're very, very proud of those guys.
Thank you, chief.
You're welcome. As we know, the polls are tomorrow. We will have an EMS standby, looking out for the voters and the volunteers at the polls in the event that something is to occur, because as we all know, it's happened before in the past, and it's important that we have a showing to support the community during a very important period in the government. The last update, I just want to thank on behalf of the members of the Fire Department, the Town Council, and the BudCon for their unanimous support in the name of civil protection and public safety by way of Article 15. So the BudCon and Town Council, thank you very much for your support. Your message is loud and clear on your position to the community as far as public safety. And that's all I have tonight.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Chief. Anyone else for public comment? All right, seeing none, public comment is closed. Before we move on with our agenda, I'm going to address one thing. You know, we had an outburst here last week in the council chambers. It's come to my attention that, you know, more keyboard chaos and more, you know, half stories told in local publications. In My Hands was requested by Ms. Paul's attorney, Kevin Coyle, the investigation that the complaint that Mr. Malaguti had. We released this three weeks ago to her attorney. I am now releasing it in the minutes for the public, and at this time, I am also asking the council for a consensus to release all 91A requests by the requesters and the content that was sent back to them to the website for the last year, and all 91A information going forward to the public when the requester makes them to the website.
So moved.
Second.
We're taking a vote. All those in favor, sing by by saying aye.
Aye.
Chair votes in the affirmative, so we will release everything into the public. We have nothing to hide here. The truth will tell the truth. Read what's in it, and then you can make your own decisions. So Cameron, this is for you, to put with the minutes when you pick that up later on. Okay, first item, I have an ordinance 2024-01, an amendment to the zoning orders relative rezoning map 10 lot 92. This is a first reading only, and for those of you who are looking at these, you don't normally see the orders. They change the readings to the bottom and not the top, so I actually have to go looking for it. So you have to make sure when you're looking at these that you see that, you know, it's not no longer up in the upper corner, they're in the lower end. So just make sure of looking at that. I'll ask for a motion to waive first reading.
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor, sing by by saying aye.
Aye.
Chair votes in the affirmative. Ladies and gentlemen, our next Town Council meeting, which is... Bear with me.
Mr. Chair, it ought to be the 20th.
February... So it'll be on the February 20th Town Council meeting, we'll be addressing this ordinance.
Correct.
Thank you for proper noticing. Next is Order 2024-02, Withdrawal from the Cable Equipment Reserve Fund. Looking for a motion to approve a withdrawal of $3,693.96.
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor, sing by by saying aye.
Aye.
Chair votes in the affirmative, and Order 2024-02 passes. I'm sorry, I should have passed this along earlier. I have the sewer warrant here that I need to pass around to be signed. And the next item I have is an update on the charge of the Lundary Arts Council from Larry Casey.
Kirsten, do you want to address this, or I can?
Chief, let me just give the contacts real quick, and then you can take it from there. So as we're going through, looking at 91A compliance with boards, we realized that the Arts Council composition and their mission had evolved from the last time their charge was amended in 2006. So I sat down with the council, with the Arts Council, and asked them to come up with a revised charge that more reflected their current membership goals and roles within their organization.
So we very much appreciated Kirsten coming in and bringing us up to speed on this. I've been involved with the Arts Council pretty much since before the turn of the century, and we sort of operated in an ad hoc...
Which century? You set yourself up for that one.
Jim Butler was still playing centerfield at Nelson Field.
That was pre-World War I?
You'll have to chuck your baseball carts for that. Anyway, we, you know, we have a great group of people, and we've been operating very efficiently, and we're glad to be made aware of our requirements, you know, as an ad hoc committee. What you're looking at in this document is very much in line with the original charge. The only changes that we suggested and request are that we expand the voting membership role from seven individuals to seven to nine. We're currently operating with eight voting members. The reason for that, and also to add one to three alternate members, voting members. And the reason for that is that as we try to bring ourselves in line with the right-to-know law, we at times found it challenging to form a quorum to hold a meeting, and so we like to have that flexibility in terms of being able to, you know, meet the requirement and also conduct business. It's especially important, we meet monthly, but during the concerts on the common season, we suspend our meetings, so in essence, we run from January to June, oftentimes cutting it off at May and then resuming in September, so we don't have that many working sessions throughout the year. The other modification that we asked to put in this charge is that some years ago, we designated or determined that we wanted to have a treasurer as an extra measure of accountability to, you know, help us reconcile the funds coming in and going out, and also act as an interface with the town controller. And so in addition to the chair, vice chair, and secretary, we've added, formally added the treasurer position. So happy to answer any questions about what we're up to and...
Any questions?
All seem like very reasonable changes to come up with current laws.
Do you have a motion to nominate or accept?
Well, I have nominees here for applicants for nominees here.
So, Mr. Do you want them by name?
We can take... We do have to take them by name.
So, Mr. Chair.
Larry gave us some challenging last names, you know.
Mr. Chair, when you revised the... When the charter was revised, when the charge was revised in 2006, it did have a motion and second to accept the charge by itself beforehand. I didn't know.
So, Mr. Chair, I'd like to make...
I don't have a... We don't have a formal document for that?
Okay.
I'm asking that.
It was in the minutes from 2006.
It was only done in the minutes?
It was just... There was somebody motion to approve the charge, the charge as amend bid from the 1997 charge.
Okay. Should we do this more formally, or should we just continue to follow the same past practice?
I think that maybe what would split the difference is if the council just acts on it tonight, and then we can draft a conforming charge that will adopt essentially what the council agreed on.
Acts how?
Sorry?
Acts how? Acts on it tonight in what way?
Gives...
We vote on it tonight.
Takes a vote. Yes.
And then we'll draft it up?
Yes.
Okay. Something so that someone doesn't have to ask the question I just asked about what happened in 1997.
I apologize. The drafted charge is in your packet.
It is?
Yes. So you have the 2006 charge in your packet, and you have the revised 2024 charge in your packet. I apologize.
They're next to each other.
It's right before the minutes.
I think it must be in the... Is it in the packet? Oh, yeah, okay. You'll see at the bottom right corner.
All right, so there's nothing... All right, so I'll accept the motion for the Lundary Arts Council, Town Council charge as presented in our packet, revised this evening, January 22nd, 2024.
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor, sing by by saying aye.
Aye.
Chair votes in the affirmative.
Good.
Appreciate it. Usually, it's in here. That's why I didn't...
Oh, gotcha.
Yeah, that's why I didn't see it, so no worries. All right, and let's just knock out the ad hoc committee at the same time if someone wants to make a motion on those.
Mr. Chair, I'd like to reconfirm the eight, and you want them named?
I think we need to name them.
The following...
The following eight...
But they have to be sworn in as well.
Thank you. The following eight ad hoc full member positions, Larry Casey, Stephanie Millville, Kristen...
Karen.
Thank you, Karen.
Jagir.
Jagir. Stephen Lee.
Dasha.
Dasha.
Bolotova.
Bolotova. Greg.
Dakota.
Dakota. Jan McGlaughlin in Chitwaters.
Yeah, Kit's got the easiest name.
All those in favor, sing by by saying aye.
Do you need a second?
Second.
Do I have one? Thank you, all those in favor, sing by by saying aye.
Aye.
Chair votes affirmative. Will those members please see the town clerk and be sworn in? Anything further?
Good work.
Okay, so they're to report to the town clerk individually?
Sworn in by the town clerk. They're an ad hoc committee, so there's no term.
Okay. We have a meeting coming up on February 8. If there's any way we could all do it all at once, that would be great. If not, I'll just ask people to come to the Town Hall.
Whatever you can work out with the clerk or whatever the case may be.
Right, thank you.
Most people, I think, stop in, but I'm sure she'll accommodate whatever you're trying to do.
Okay, thank you very much.
Not that I ever speak for her.
You're a smart man.
Thank you, Larry.
Thank you, Larry.
Okay. With that, I'll accept approval of the minutes of January 12, 2024 as presented in our packet.
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor, sing by by saying aye.
Aye.
Chair votes in the affirmative. Okay, do I have any liaison reports? Anything new and exciting going on? I guess nothing new and exciting is going on. Town manager report.
Few things this evening, Mr. Chairman. The first is, I'd like to just point out that I had hosted a coffee event with our state delegation, including Councillor Dunn. It was, I think, surprisingly, refreshingly productive, cordial, courteous.
It was.
And we talked probably 75% about water and the water issues that are facing Londonderry. And it was pretty much, I think, I think it's fair to say, unanimous concern about water quality in Londonderry. So that was nice. Councillor Dunn, Mr. Wiles, the Utilities Committee Chair, and I also attended an event at the Senior Center to highlight the article that's on the ballot this year, why it's on the ballot, what we're seeking to do with it and, you know, sort of even what PFAS is, where it came from, and what some of the other contaminants are that we should be concerned about. And then lastly, Mr. Chairman, just to address a comment that was made in public comment. As you pointed out, we don't address personnel issues. And there are just, you know, as I've pointed out in the past, some things that it's just not appropriate to discuss at a Town Council meeting. I would suggest to you, I would tell you that appropriate notifications have been made, keeping the Planning Board leadership apprised of department staffing. And that has been handled in an appropriate manner. I know that the Assistant Town Manager and myself are always happy to discuss concerns that board members might have. And I would suggest to you, Mr. Chairman, that this is one that maybe would have been better brought forward as a phone call instead of in public comment at a Town Council meeting.
Okay, thank you. Anything, Assistant Town Manager report?
I'll send.
Nothing further? Okay, so, all right, again, tomorrow morning, bright and early, gentlemen, you know? Don't plan on going home until we're done. Here's the process. We don't leave until the ballots go into the vault because we run a safe, secure, and fair election here. And we have to sign off on all the ballot boxes that they're secured and sealed and done. And we leave by police escort. Is there anything else for this evening?
Motion, George R.
Second.
All those in favor, sing by by saying aye.
Aye.
Chair votes in the affirmative.